We could be here tonight to meet together. Father, we ask for guidance in all the things that we do. The Father is so grateful for the ones we're going to recognize tonight, these athletes, these students that performed on behalf of this district. Did such a good job and represented our district so well. Father, just bless us in all that we do, which is just made.
Thank you, Deans. Next, we'll move into State Quarter Communication, which will be a growth update and long-range facility planning report.
Okay, we've just got a quick little update that segues nicely into our long-range planning committee. Growth update, charge takes. So this, yeah, right there. So you'll see on the next slide is the article that you guys saw. Saw on the next slide, it shows that some of the Bloomtown districts on the, yeah, right there, that are growing around the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And you see that Godly's down there on the left, and our article came out last month. But on the next slide, you see that it goes pretty well with the fastest-growing areas in the state. And that's the Dallas-Fort Worth area, the Austin-San Antonio area, and the Houston area. On the next slide, you can kind of see from our demographer update, that's Tarrant County and Dallas County, and the yellow in the middle, then all those red fast-growing districts outlined in blue down there. At the bottom is Godly down there. So that culminates into what our demographers have told us. We've been growing pretty fast lately, but according to the demographers, it's our fastest growth is ahead of us. They're saying we're going to double in five years and triple in another 10 years. You can kind of see some of those growth stats there. Next one, you see that's from our demographers. Those are some of our current developments and our future developments. And that correlates with the next slide, which is the city's engineer plan. Pretty much the same ones, it's just a little bit more detailed on the next one. So this is, this is an updated graph from our demographer. And we're down there at number 23, and I thought, why are we way down there? We're one of the fastest-growing districts around. Well, this is, this is growth in the last year, percentage growth in the last year. So, but we're not at the bottom, because this is actually all the school districts in Region 11, which is basically the Fort Worth side of Dallas-Fort Worth. So, and all the sort of 76 school districts, we were about 23. The next slide, we bumped up a little bit over number 11 there, and that's the amount of students that we've gained in the last five years. So those are all the districts, so we're basically top 10. And again, of those 76 school districts. If you look at percentage growth in the last five years, we're at number four up there. We've grown at about 37%. So in one of the fastest states, fastest-growing states in the United States, and one of the fastest areas of that state, we are one of the fastest-growing school districts, if that gives you any context. And that leads to, of course, our growth is coming around. Which segues pretty well into our long-range facilities team. We have several members here. If anybody that was a part of the long-range facilities planning team, would you guys mind standing up, just so we can kind of recognize and see you guys? Let's give these guys a round of applause. They worked a lot of Wednesdays. I think we met eight or nine times and talked a lot. I don't know if we had a meeting that was under two hours, but we cussed and discussed and talked about all different sorts of things. And this is the recommendation that the committee is bringing to the board, that Mr. Neal is going to talk us through right now. So Mr. Neal will let you take it away.
Thank you. So my name is Jeff Neal. I am a dad in the community. We've got, we've got five kiddos all enrolled in the school. And my wife and I serve here at Stonewater Church. We're small group leaders in the youth program there. And I'm just here tonight to present the committee's recommendation for a bond package. Our agenda here. We'll get these slides right here in a sec. Bear with me. I can go ahead, and you guys can catch up here on this slide if you prefer. So today, you know, we're going to go talk about the committee, the priorities and principles, the growth, which Dr. Dear touched on a little bit, our bonding capacity, the recommendation, and of course, we'll take some questions. So the long-range facilities planning committee, we had eight meetings. We met between August and November, and we had 60 members, some of which you on the board feel free to add if you'd like. Now, our committee process, that's going to require a slide. Strucker Wi-Fi is in the bond package. There we are, there's our agenda that I touched on there. And that's who we are looking down so far. And our process and progress is coming up. Right there, there we are. So here's where we are right here. We're on, these are the things that we've done with all the meetings from August to now. And right there on the highlighted portion, presenting, making a recommendation to present to the board here. That's where we are, and then we've got the board Friday, February 17th. And Father, we'll actually take action. Dr. Dear touched on this. We recognize all those that were involved in the committee, and thank you once again for that. The, we also were taking that we were bed good, the cookies were always good. Okay, building charge. Or, I'm sorry, God in charge, here we go. This is, you know, just to report the findings, trustees, on how to proceed, and essentially the accommodations up to 5,000 students. That was our goal, is we need to accommodate additional 5,000 students. Oh, and it's projects from the 2021 bond that were postponed due to inflation. So that was our priorities right there. We start with our 2021 bond projects that were postponed. Accommodate 5,000 additional students, student learning experience, safety and security, technology, and then we touched on access to parking and traffic flow to improve that. Principles, like it was really important to us, we felt as a committee, to honor probably small-town recovery values, be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars, prioritize student learning over their conveniences. More growth is coming, so we won't try to do everything with this bond. So the enrollment is expected to increase. As you see right here in this slide, we're at 2,800 enrolled students right now. And you can see, we've got nearing 6,000 in the next nine years, and, you know, almost 3,000 in the next five years. Okay, so these are some of the slides that we used, I'm sorry, slides, some of the worksheets that we had, that we played with, and we really were evaluating adding different projects. We could really play with the spreadsheet, and it would really show us where we are in reaching this 5,000, accommodating 5,000 student number, which year we were going to accommodate it, where we are on those with per project. It's a really interactive worksheet that we got to utilize, and very efficient and helpful. Talk about the tax effort, you know? You know, the breakdown of taxes, so property value, there it is right there, the tax rate. And the tax basis, okay? And you guys, a lot of this is covered in the packets that were, that you guys have. So all these are the packets, I'm not touching on one in depth, you guys have it. So bonding capacity conclusions. Confidence in continued growth is very high. Interest rates are rising, but still very favorable. We have future bonds that are going to be needed. And we want to prioritize projects to increase student capacity and maximize bonding capacity. Here's a prioritization activity that we did. As you can see, there are projects that did not get, that we did not carry over to present, that we're going to wait and try to tackle later day. So those right there across the off, and the other ones there on the elementaries, for example. This is an example of another worksheet that we did as a committee. Middle school discussion, okay, so this was, this was a big topic for many meetings. And, you know, the idea is definitely to keep six through eight together. We're going to renovate the existing Godly middle school, which will increase capacity, and build a new middle school, and another site which will increase capacity when needed. So our recommendation is, you know, learning spaces. Right here, you see three new elementary schools, our probably middle school renovation, some renovations at Harvey Valley, but damn, right there, we got space for 5,000, oh, 5,000 additional students right here in our, in our presentation. Infrastructure and support, okay? So we've still got, you know, safety and security upgrades. We've got land purchases, wastewater treatment plant, tornado shelters, additional cars and traffic flow improvements. So this is just some infrastructure and support that we've got in the package. Student programs, that was really important to us. We touched on these a lot. You know, performing arts center, athletics additions, the ag, the ag deal, agricultural additions, ag facilities, locker room, and agriculture, agriculture and tennis. Future projects, okay? So here's some other ones that were, that were not voted on. I was outvoted on the youth sports complex. I was like, I was the only vote out of all 60, I think. And it was a very enthusiastic vote. But, but these are some additional, you know, future projects that aren't in this recommendation, that will be, they're, they're coming up. So in conclusion, you know, the committee asked the board to consider these projects. This plan will ensure that, you know, 5,000 new students expected to enroll in Godly ISV schools over the next eight, 10 years will have a place in our classroom bonds to be issued as the growth continues. Expected increases in this tax base will create the bonding capacity needed to fund this plan. I think that's it, was that it, is it? Okay, so if you guys have any questions, I have to answer.
Great work, if there's ever involved in the process, have you, anything to add to that?
Let me comment that I was going to add, is that I thought the process was very thorough in trying to look at a broad spectrum of projects across the district, trying to assess all different needs. And you could see some of them that really are not needs at this point. But still, it would be nice to have the district, so, you know, I thought the process that the team led us through was very, very productive, and really narrowed down to the true needs, norms, or our education.
And to add to that, and this is in that end of the slide, is there was, there was some, there was a disagreement when they should have been. There was a lot of different perspectives that went into this, so I was, I felt it was very productive.
Do you remember, is this going to result in a tax rate increase?
No.
That's correct, it is not. I'm pretty sure we mentioned that. One other thing, you mentioned that it was important to the committee for six and eight to keep together, but they did like the idea of having a sixth grade wing. They also liked the idea of keeping ninth graders here at the high school. Maybe having a ninth grade wing, so, so a little bit separate, but still having a memory involved in, on the campuses.
That's right, we did feel that was important.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, and looking at the long range, there looks like a new elementary school in 2025, 2027, 2029. And I know that the school, the ISV has some land now, but has there been a projection of where those elementaries will be built?
We've got some land north on 2331, which would be the perfect place for it. We just don't have the infrastructure very yet. That's one reason the wastewater treatment plant was there. If, if the neighborhood or development starts developing and gets, gets some more infrastructure there, then hopefully that's a savings that we will see. We do have some land, we do have some developments, some future developments that have said that they would give us land, but just haven't done it yet. So we do have other leads, a few pieces of land, but we're going to need more, as much as we're going to this year. Any other comments, questions? She's got the information here in front of you. We'll, we'll look in this in more depth, and like Mr. Neal said, we'll have a, have a solution or have a conclusion in late January, early February. Thank you very much, Mr. Neal, and thank to everyone that was involved in the process. Appreciate all your time.
All right, next we'll move into student recognition. And first we'll have the Godly High School volleyball team.
All right, so I just want to say, first off, you know, a lot of this goes in, and kids do a lot of hard work. There's also adults that do amazing, wonderful things with these kiddos. And so I want to thank Coach Hammett and her coaches that led our volleyball team this year. The first outright district championship since '09. So it was really, really great for our volleyball team this year. We're really proud of the girls, and I will let Ms. Hammett explain everything they do.
Hi, for those of you who don't know, I'm Coach Hammett. This is my third year here at Godly. It's been the best place I have been, and this has been probably the most successful season that I have ever coached, and most of that goes to the youth young women. Almost all of it goes to them, these young women. So first of all, I just want to say to all of y'all as a group, y'all are amazing. Y'all work hard and earned every single day. So we finished the season this year 31-8, and we were outright district champs, undefeated district champs, didn't drop a set in district play, which was really big for any program, but it's really big for us to not only not have this district championship since '09, but to be outright undefeated district champs. So I could go on and on about everything these girls accomplished this season, but the biggest things were that alone. On top of, we did advance to second round in playoffs again. Unfortunately, we met up with number three Salina, second round, so that was unfortunate. But we took them to four, we definitely gave them a run for their money, and I was very proud of how these girls competed, because Salina is an extreme opponent, great program, great coaching, so they, our girls held their own, and I was very proud of them for that. Like I said, we finished 31-8, I'm trying to think of everything. That's kudos to y'all, because there's a lot to talk about, I just don't have enough time. District awards were announced and posted on all social media, so those were put out there, and I was very proud of these girls for everything they accomplished in district awards. But what they don't know is that today, I was sent to all Johnson County recognitions, and even these girls don't know them yet, so I'm going to announce them for the first time to everyone in this room, including the recipients of these awards. So for all Johnson County, Bailey Mobley was offensive MVP. Sophomore Bree Hubbard was co-newcomer of the year. Logan Reed, Bryn Staten, and, sorry, I don't have them in front of me. This was just today at like 2 o'clock. So Logan Reed, Bryn Staten, and Katrina Leveritt were first-team all Johnson County. And then Ashton England, who couldn't be here with us tonight because she's sick. And, let me look at your faces again, I love you all, I'm sorry. My goodness gracious, Trinity Roden, I'm sorry, were second-team all Johnson County. So these girls accomplished a lot this season, we're very, very, very proud of them. They at one point were ranked number eight in the state for 4A. So just kudos to y'all, you all did amazing, y'all earned all of that, so thank y'all, good job. I'll announce them as they go through, Ms. Lexi Abbott, Katrina Leveritt, Bailey Mobley, Bryn Staten, Trinity Roden, Kirsten Robles, Bree Hubbard, Kendall Castor, Jessica Castillo, Audrey Rodriguez, Logan Reed. And then not able to be here tonight were freshman Fella Van Ward and junior Ashton England. Thank you.
Great job, ladies. Cross Country, he'll come on up with Coach McFarland, so he's on up. So our Cross Country team was also outright district champs on the girl's side, super proud of them. This, once again, comes with coming up very early in the mornings. We had a little bit of construction start this year, I don't know if anybody's noticed it around this place. But Coach Hill and Coach McFarland got a running track planned out back around the area, and the kids are running early, early in the morning, and running on the turf fields that we have, whatever else they can find to get kids to run. So further ado, Coach McFarland and all the hard work heated.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, my privilege to recognize the Cross Country team here. It's just been an honor of mine to serve these girls and their families this year. And it's just, it's just a special group of people, really, all around these girls, starting with their parents, and I know I have three, two or three, I think I have three moms here tonight. And that's really the biggest deal, is the families and what they do, and how they shuttle these girls around. And that's why, that's really the reason they're successful. And then the people around the school here, obviously, it's really bigger than me. Mr. Flood is a big deal here on the campus of the high school, letting these girls go to and from meets. And then I also like to take a chance to recognize Ms. Swam, the principal at Link's, who I work with every day, I come over here for two periods a day, which is not easy for our campus at Link's, for me to leave and come back. And then if you go in her office, the, one of the first things you see is a cross-country schedule, like right in front of her desk, because of how often I've gone. And so she's a big part of this. You know, and so it's just a lot of people around these girls that make them successful. Coach Hammett's a big part of it, she lets these, a lot of these girls play volleyball. And then she turns around and coaches these girls near the track. The basketball coaches, it's just, it's just a huge effort of people around these girls that make them successful. You know, it's almost a privilege to be, be a part of it. Also, Coach Hill's going to talk to you here in just a second, he's a big part of it. And if you guys don't know, we restructured Cross Country just last year, where we have two head coaches. I've been coaching Cross Country 10 years here at Godly, and this is the first time we've had boys and girls separate. And he's got a group of boys coming up in the seventh grade that are going to be up here one day getting recognition from the school board. It's just going to take a couple of years, but, but it's not out of the question to get off the bus at a high school cross-country meeting, there'd be between 50 and 60 Godly boys and girls at a meet, and so it's really grown, it's really, really doing well. These girls are having their sports banquet on Wednesday, so I'm not going to give out any awards or anything. I'm going to save that for our sports banquet. But just to talk about them as a team, they did win district by a lot, really, by landslide. And so I did write some things down, it's a lot. So District 10 4A, there's seven teams. They won by a score of 33 to Alborado, sorry, 32 to Alborado's 55, which, if you've never been in a cross-country race, that's a big, big win. And Cross, Alborado traditionally is a storied, you know, state-renowned cross-country program. So for us to beat them like that is a big deal for us. And then our top five girls, all finishing in the top 10 of the race. And so it really was, it really was quite a show to see. We'll introduce these girls here, but Stephanie finished third overall in that race. Sophia Hodges was fifth, Cassie Ferguson was seventh, Sadie Huey finished eighth, Peola Diaz was ninth, Jordan Geissman was 14th, and Amina Anara, who's not here, she's sick, she finished 22nd. So just a really, really good showing for our school at the district race. So they advanced to regionals after the district championship. Oh, I do want to go back, so I just want to say, our JV also won district, which was something to see, because there's 45 runners, and 10 Godly girls finished in the top 12 of that JV race. In fact, the first eight runners were from Godly, it was, it was really something to see. And so the program is doing well. At regionals, though, they finished sixth as a team at regionals. There's 22 teams that race at that meet, so to finish in sixth is really, a really big accomplishment. The top four go to state, and so we keep missing that. The last, the last four or five years, we keep missing it by one or two spots. And so that's frustrating to do that, but at the same time, it's, you know, they're doing really, really well. There's 157 runners at the regional cross-country meet, and here's how they finished. Stephanie Favela was 20th, Sadie Huey 24th, Cassidy Ferguson finished 44th, Sophia Hodges was 49th, Peola Diaz 54th, and Jordan finished 58. And so all the girls are way in the top half of that race. Also, as I'm sure you know, two of these girls qualified for state in that race. Stephanie Favela and Sadie Huey both qualified as individuals. So we did get out as a team, but those two girls were able to finish in, in the top of the field and qualify for state. So that's the first time that's happened for us since 2007. And so that's a really big deal. So Stephanie and Sadie both went ahead and represented Godly at the state meet, which has 152 runners in it, and Stephanie finished 33rd, and Sadie finished 102nd. Both of those girls are ninth graders, and so just to put it in perspective, and it's just kind of neat about cross-country, because the stats are easy to pull up, because everything's based on time. But out of the entire state of Texas, 1A through 6A, out of every girl that ran a two-mile this year, which is everybody, everybody does it eventually, Stephanie was the 43rd-best ninth grader, 1A through 6A. And Sadie was the 199th-best ninth grader. And so if you just cycle that down, in 4A only, Stephanie was the 12th-best ninth grader in the state, and Sadie finished, had the 38th-best time in the state. And so they're, we're looking here at some of the best freshmen in 4A across country. So we're just really, really proud. I could go on and on, but I won't. I'll talk about them more at the sports banquet. I'll talk about them more at the sports banquet. As they go by, I'll introduce their names. Cassidy Ferguson is a junior. Jordan Geissman is a ninth grader. Peola Diaz is a junior. Sophia Hodges is a ninth grader. Sadie Huey, a ninth grader, and Stephanie Favella, a ninth grader.
Coach Hill is absolutely outstanding in making everybody run that he can find. If he can find you, you'll go run. So I avoid him like the plague, because I'm afraid he'll make me run sometimes. But he does get a lot of boys out there, so really proud of him to get the boys, and we had one crack regionals this year. So I'll let Coach kind of tell that story.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for y'all's support for not just cross-country, but all athletics in the school district. Really appreciate that. Also, Coach McFarland said earlier, but Mr. Flood, the admin team, and our teachers, our staff, we get our kids out every week and take them to run. It's usually during the week, in the mornings, and maybe early afternoons. So they're out of school lots, our, the teachers work with these kids, make sure they're sitting on top of the grades and stuff, so really appreciate that. So I did have one boy get out. Our goal was to get our team out to the regional meet, which hasn't happened in a while, I'm not sure how long, Coach McFarland probably can tell you more about that. I do know the last time there was a district championship was Mr. McFarland's son, 2001, that was the last time district championship at Godly, over 20 years ago. So my goal is to find, to bring a district championship at the high school level in the future. Our 7th graders won district this year by a landslide, as Coach McFarland said, and our 8th graders got second. So we've got, we've got really good runners coming up. This young man, Junior Trail, is a sophomore, and most of our good runners were sophomores or freshmen. And so we've got some really good 8th graders as well. So we've got some good kids coming up, so I'm excited about it. But Junior this year was, was our, our best runner this year. Great attitude, great work ethic, whatever you tell them to do. There's been times I've got golf practice in afternoon, I've got basketball fall games, I would tell those guys, go in the back and go run, so many loops, they ever go get it done without a coach here telling them what to do. So that kinda commitment and discipline is what makes great runners. So I feel like in the future, we're gonna be really good. This is the toughest, and I coached cross-country in Keene for 21 years, and had a lot of success there. This is the toughest cross-country district I've ever coached in. I mean, from top to bottom, I thought we had a chance to get out this year, and we got 10 of them come in, and then walks at your life got better, and it was really competitive. So the kids will just have to work hard and keep pushing. But again, this young man, at the, at the district meet, I knew it was gonna be really competitive, he had to really fight to get out. They made, so they have two mile and a half loops, and he came by on the first loop, and at about the two mile mark, he was sitting at 14th. The top 10 runners get out. And I, I kinda got on him and, you know, said, pick it up, and he was kinda by himself, and it ran across, and then he came back around from the, the last 800 meters, and he was sitting eighth and moved up to seventh. So it shows a lot of grit, this young man, knowing that he had to, you know, put it down and kinda sell out to get out. So very proud of him. And again, I think he's gonna anchor us next year, we're gonna have a lot of success in the future. I'm really excited about it. So again, our regional qualifier, Junior Trail.
Ms. Lofton, come up with you too. Come on up, Ms. Lofton. So super proud of them. I gave Mr. Bennett a strict time limit, because otherwise we could be here for days. Kids are back. We're really proud of the FFA program. Lots of good things, as y'all know, every year it's becoming annual that we end up at state for something. And it's no, no different this year. Really proud of Mr. Bennett and Ms. Lofton, the extra hours they spend, all the time up here. If you don't know, Friday night, we had our Zingred cornhole tournament, and there's a lot of cornhole going on, but then there was a lot of Mr. Bennett shearing steers and whatever. If, if you're nearby, you can get an haircut. So if you need a free one, come on Friday before the stock show, and he'll give you an haircut, because he's got shears. But he spends countless hours, and so does Ms. Lofton and everybody else working with the FFA kids. So really proud of our teachers and sponsors for all the work they do. Without further ado, Mr. Bennett.
All right, thanks. Forty-five minutes we got here. I really, I understand it, and we do have so much to be grateful for, to be proud of. I wanna thank you for your support of our ag department all through the years, but especially for bringing us Ms. Nix and Mr. Metter, they have helped us tell our story so many times, day in, day out. And there's a time or so, oh no, don't show that picture, but they, they clean it up, and they make us look good, and I sure do thank you for that. And then on my part, getting as old as I am, I'm so grateful for my teaching partners. Ms. Lofton is here with me today. Look, she just got gay. We got big things going on. That's one big thing. Ms. Borg turned into Ms. Borger, has been, become married and has a baby now herself. She's at home taking care of Quade. And then our newest teacher, Ms. Adams, Catherine Adams, she was expecting in January, but she had her baby in Thanksgiving, so we've lost her. But these are such special people. And then Mr. Pinkerton. If, if you don't have a Lloyd in your life, you gotta get one. He is awesome. He is continually keeping me going, keeping us all going, and the whole team is just awesome, and the way things work out. And for these guys and many others to do so well without the teacher right there with them, man, I just sit here right away the whole time. I don't have to, I drive the bus, and I do really well at that. But it is a, a good place that I'm in, not only being in Godly, but being able to, to serve and, and work here. Before we honor them, I do gotta tell you though, we got so much happening this, this week. There's a fundraiser for our FFA, livestock exhibitors, Friday at your banquet. You can look on Facebook for all those things, please do that. And then our county show is at first, second week of January. We entered 110 students, 240 projects are going to our county show, and we're excited about that. So we need our booster club to come along and support us in those things. We have our CDE, our career events coming up in the spring. There's a lot, our barn is full, no, I'm sorry, our ag facility is full with over 100 projects. And so just a lot of exciting things for our future that we have. And so with that, I just need you to understand that it's, it's not me, it's, it's, it's everybody, just like Mr. Hill and other coaches were saying. It takes a lot to make this happen, but it stems from right here, and so we're really fortunate, we're really proud of these guys. In the fall, FFA has leadership development events, and we had 11 teams from speaking events to parliamentary procedure and on, on throughout. And they all did very well at district. We had five teams advance to the area contest, and then we have two teams that advanced to state, and we want to recognize them. First, I wanna do the ag advocacy team. Why don't y'all come on right here in front of, of me here? The ag advocacy team, there was 530 teams in the state that, that participated in this contest, and these guys had to advocate for an agricultural issue. And they, their topic was about honeybees and keeping that process going, and how viable the bees are to agriculture and our lives. And they did very well in every contest, and then they were in the top 24 of the state of Texas, and so we're very proud of them, and for what they've done. And so we have Cadence Hawes, Cadence, you can go ahead and shake hands if you like, Cadence Hawes, Taryn Franks, Trev and Paul, and then the best looking Hawes, that's Peyton Hawes, and then Owen Nixon. That's our ag advocacy team. And then we're very proud of these, I gotta back up. I was talking about the county show. We had a wonderful thing happen. This lady right here, Kate Heiner, she is going to be the queen of the county show. Now you think, oh, well, that's really wonderful, but she will go for that $12,000 scholarship she gets with that, and plus just the notoriety of being a public relations person for Godly and for agriculture and for the whole county is really an awesome thing. And so these ladies were on a team called Public Relations. And there's a, there's a, there's a presentation about that too. And there's so many of those, the words that y'all say that come back to me, like competition and good things. Anyways, we'll get into that. But these ladies did very well going through the district, winning that, a little scary there for a moment in district, but we won that, and then in area they were first. And then when they get to state, they had to go through a heat, and they were, did very well, got into the top 10 of the 24, and then ended up on Saturday being number five of the whole state of Texas. And so we're very proud of them for what they've done. Chris, you go. Kate Heiner, Caitlin White, Carrie Roy, and Emma Tyus.
Thank you everyone for coming, we really appreciate it. If you guys want to, as we transition into the business portion of our meeting, you are avoidable, you're not gonna hurt our feelings, you're more likely to stay as well. Thank you guys for coming. And as they're leaving, as Yarkin said, I wanna just real fast encapsulate the fall at the high school. It has been so successful. From all our athletic teams, you saw cross-country, you saw volleyball, football went the deepest it's ever been in the playoffs this year. Van got the highest rating it ever got at the area marching contest this year. Host had competed for the first time. We started a Texas Association of Future Educators Club, and we have 12 kids going to state in that event. We found out cheerleading after their first competition has gotten an invitation to a nationals competition now. So it has been across the board, from ag to athletics to academics, just an outstanding fall at the high school. So really proud of everybody at the high school and all those kids and people that they do. Thank y'all for y'all's support to make that happen and let us have the freedom to go do those things. So just thanks for everything, and we'll, we'll get adjusted here. And I apologize, I got to go a little too fast, and I skipped over an instruction update. So we'll go to S and P Pleasant View Construction Update.
There, there. Thank you Dr. Dear and Board and Principal Block. Here is your December update for Pleasant View. You can see this is the administration area, progress from November to December. Right now that is the break room, right there. You can go to the next. That one got flipped a little bit, but as you can see, from November, we had furniture starting to be delivered. Right now, in December, all that furniture has been ungraded, put in place. We can go to the next. Not sure why this is doing this. This is from today, so you can see the library furniture being set in place, final clean going on. Go ahead and go to the next one. I don't know why all these flips. But those are the new learning pods at your learning stair, so students can huddle up in there and read a book. Area four, you can still see furniture being set in place, areas cleaned out. Sorry, this is a little bit difficult to read, I'm not sure a lot of those went this way. I can't even tell what that one is. Oh yeah, cafeteria. And then the next one, so this is the big difference from last month. You can see the gym and where we are today. Striping, uh, floor was laid last week, the strapping was done, and the basketball rooms are being set this week. If you can go, yep, there we go. So we have landscaping going in, we need the weather to cooperate a little bit, but they're still fighting through it right now. We're getting the streets cleaned. Is there anything on here? Oh, and the dumpster gate. So you have all the dumpster gates, the big slider got set in there, that area is being cleaned out. I believe most of that's some of your deliveries out there, and we're getting the rest of our stuff out. And the next one? Okay, and on top of that, we did receive temporary statistical occupancy throughout our inspections, so that allows the staff come in, get personal, getting moved in. We have a list that we need to be completed, it's just taking pictures and getting that back over to the building inspectors. They'll take that, full certificate block, and see if we're good to go for January, getting students in. So it's an exciting time. With that, any questions? So this right here is supposed to give the perspective of the student's height, height
Go in positive there. Just a lot of kids doing a great job. Drone kids, thank you very much for that. Any other questions about Pleasant View before we go on to the high school?
Yeah, just a couple. So got their certificate of occupancy, so now obviously there's moving in teachers, classroom equipment, classroom, whatever they need for, for teaching. When does that happen? And is that going to affect the teachers' planned downtime over Christmas, or will it be done ahead of it?
Dr. Block, go take the microphone. Yes, thank you.
All right, yes, so we are in that process, and they're packing right now, and they have their materials, were dropped last Wednesday, so everyone's finishing up packing, and those will be in place at the end of the day tomorrow. The company will come and pick those up on Wednesday, and will take that out to the campus to drop off for us. And the teachers will start going out there, I plan to meet them after school Thursday to start giving them what they need to access their rooms. And then we have half the teachers that will go out on Friday, and then the other half the teachers that will go out on Monday. The kids, the kids are still coming, but we have Ag Day that's going on, we've got a lot of activities planned. We've got a lot of activities planned. So the teachers and the paras and parents are all just kind of working together to facilitate those activities. The company will come pick the materials up Wednesday, so we plan to have everything at least unloaded in our classrooms by the time we leave for winter break. We did provide the weekends for them. Teachers have three flex days at the end of the school year, all staff, not just teachers. But staff have the three flex days at the end of the school year. And so they're recording their time or they're clocking their time if they're a paraprofessional. So they're earning their time towards those three flex days at the end of the year. So essentially, yes, they are potentially working a little extra if they wish to do so now. But then they get that time back at the end of the school year. Many of them, I allowed them, if I knew they were coming back, to bank some of their time from the end of last year as well so that they had duplicate time. So we've been tracking that, but they all feel good about that. Try to make sure there are some weekends in there if they wish to come up. No one's required to come up on extra time. A lot of extra hands are chipping in. Paris don't have a lot of stuff to unpack, so they're helping where they can help. So everybody right now feels pretty good about it. I send them daily updates and my ramblings. They're out, but everybody's really excited about it. So we're moving along really nicely with that.
Okay, another follow-up question. So we had some challenges with getting the rock glass. Have all of the windows where we had temporary glass or temporary windows, have that all been replaced with the official windows now?
So the official glass showed up today at about 10:30. So there, sorry, so we have every piece of glass. So there is no plywood anywhere. It's all temporary, all plywood. We brought in temporary glass to fill the holes and how permanent it is going in. So all that hit the site this morning.
Okay, awesome. And just because, again, I realize I was quite pointed in some of my comments previously, thank you for making sure that we get through so that the teachers can get in ahead of the break, and then obviously we can start school after in the new semester. So thank you again for all the efforts.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I had a question. It seemed like there was a delay in the bleachers for some parts. What's the status of that?
Those are still scheduled to hit the site January 9th, and so we're communicating with Principal Block, everything like that. Anything that will not be, oh, did I say January 9th? Is when those are coming in, those parts. And so that'll be night, weekend work, whenever we get those bleachers. It will not affect the functionality of the gym for the students to start, but that'll be at night and weekend work that we'll coordinate out with the staff.
Do you have any questions about Pleasant View? All right, thank you, guys, high school?
Thank y'all so much.
Hey, good evening. Robert McNutt. Those that don't know, I'm the superintendent here, working on Phase Two for Godly High School. So Dr. Dear remembers the board. Just wanted to give you guys a little update, what we've done here in the last month here around the high school on Phase Two. So we have this first slide showing last month, and you see they're working on, if you remember, it's a combination of concrete and steel structure. They're working on part of the concrete structure there on Level Two. If you look at the picture from the 12, you can see that steel's going in all the way up to Level Three in Section D, which is the north half of the CTE. See, the structural steel on Level Two has been completed, and they've decked there as well. That's gonna support the concrete slab on, so the second level slab right there. It's hard to see from this picture, but the rough end for the mechanical systems and the plumbing systems has gone in and decked there, preparing for concrete slab, hopefully to go in this week, weather permitting. It's been really challenging here the last few days, and you guys have known we haven't had any high pressure. It's just been straight rain for the last few days. So going on to the next slide, we're working in the arena. We'd like to finish up. We've got a little portion of gravy that's left out there. We'd like to finish that up this week. So we've got that scheduled for a couple different days. We can try to get that in when there's no rain, which may not be any day this week. But we've got two slots, and if it's not raining, we'll get that poured in there. You guys can see plumbing has gone in there as well. And we'll be looking for a window in the weather, so that's one of the things right now we're dealing with, the weather. We gotta have a window in the weather for the underslab plumbing and the way that that system works and everything. We gotta have a window in the weather to get those void boxes in and get all that. So we need about a five-day window to get that poured in, and we'll have that slab go slab in on the arena. And we're looking in January to get the crane out to start erecting the big steel that makes up the arena structure. You guys remember last time we showed a little bit about the connector road, and we had paved down around the corner. You can see the boxes for the drainage structure went in in the November slide. Get to the next slide. You can see where we've completed all the paving up to those box culverts. And if you look in the next slide, you can see here's the drainage structure we're working on, the wing walls and the head walls there. We've got two days this week scheduled to pour on that weather permitting, so we're kind of, you know, doing a couple backup days to see if we can't squeeze that in between the rain. So that'll complete the drainage structure there. And then in the next month, we'll be putting in the guardrails, the traffic signs, striping, weatherproofing the road, and just completing all the, oh, the light poles as well, just completing everything that goes along with that connector road. And looking to, kind of been talking with Dr. Dear about a February date to maybe start getting buses through there. We'll do a partial turnover, working with Huckabee and the school district to accept that as a partial turnover for the connector road. And that would be the first turnover where then we go to the CTE arena as we go through the steps of the completion and phase in that completion. So do you guys have any questions about what we're doing here in the CTE or the arena?
Phase Two, no questions?
I'd like to recognize the incident. Last Friday, we were digging for part of the redesign of the Johnson County Special Unit District. Has redesigned the civil plan. We were digging it up along between the middle school and the high school to install some new private side water lines. We hit one of the existing private side water lines that fed water to the middle school. And in the process of trying to get that water stopped and capped, we ended up having to turn out water to both the middle school and the high school. And, you know, we understand that this is owner-occupied campus. We're not out here just working on our own in the greenfield side. So, you know, that's part of our focus, is try to minimize impact on the school district, the staff, and the students. So we failed you guys on Friday. I failed you guys on Friday. I want to apologize for the inconvenience to the staff and the students. And, you know, moving forward, we're bringing in our safety department, and all the members of our safety department, our members of our executive leadership team, as well as our onsite team tomorrow to meet with four or five construction, my civil constructors, and debrief on that incident, look at the work that they have going forward to finish, and make sure that, you know, we minimize the interruption and impact to the occupied campus here. So want to apologize for letting you guys down on Friday, and that was quite an inconvenience to the staff and students.
We appreciate that, and we're a lot of very upset kids.
I did see a lot of thumbs up and cheering, you know, from the students. But we do understand it's serious business, and we are working to minimize that.
Well, we appreciate you taking ownership, because that might have happened on another project a couple months ago. So thank you very much, Robert. We appreciate you answering. Any other questions for Robert, Phase Two? Okay, thank you very much. Reader, Phase Three.
Hello, hello. My name is Jeff Stevens for Redeck Construction. I will be the project manager for the additions to Godly High School, Phase Three. Start the slide with rendering, which you can expect to see in January, December, January of 2024. And I look forward to meeting with you guys once more and getting you involved in it. So to start with, you know, we just started about a week ago, so thought we'd take a moment and share our site logistics plan. This is what you guys can expect to see in January when it comes out into spring semester. We'll take over the entire practice field area, have it completely fenced in. We're showing quite a bit of signage. You can pick that apart with the goal behind the signage is to keep construction aware of students and keep students aware of construction, and then do our best to keep everybody separated. Like I said, we just started really last Tuesday. One of the bigger, actually one of the critical scopes of work we have is relocating the transformer that's serving the high school currently. So we started that last Tuesday. We got the area completely fenced in. Started saw cutting Tuesday. I think we had all of the pavement removed by Thursday. Electrician came in Friday, we started digging. So the photo on the left is from last Tuesday. The photo on the right is from today. We started running conduits outside of the transfer pads. We had to cut across the bus lane and fire lane. We've got transplates in place there. The goal is to have all the pipe out of transfer pads by Thursday of this, excuse me, Thursday of this week, so we can start getting ready for the transfer pads and then start moving to the cross here. Just another photo of the transfer relocation. There you go. All right, so this is a photo of last Tuesday of the area the football field to be in. This was last Tuesday, and this was this morning. It was a little bit foggy, hard to see. Parrot moved in and pushed on Wednesday, Thursday of last week. Really started moving there on Friday. So he's currently working on the small practice field, 50-yard practice field, 100-yard practice field. We're working on the small practice field currently right now, in about two to three weeks worth of grading. Night scare will come in for an irrigation and saw after that. And another photo looking back towards the high school of the work at the small football field, or small practice. But so our goal right now, so transfer relocation is very critical. We've gotta get through that. We have to build power to the high school that has to take place over Christmas break, which is why we've started on getting as much of the pathway as possible. So also on Christmas break, we'll move in, get our site logistics set up, get all our fencing in, and then we'll work on student staff separation. And have to build a new wall, a temporary wall at the time point, and just make sure that we've got ourselves separate students. Any questions?
Yeah, a question for you. So obviously, the access to this particular set of doors where staff normally come and go is blockballed. Obviously, you're working there. So where does staff have access to the building now?
Right now, the plan is to go through the double doors right next to the kitchen. For the, I think there's a double doors underneath the, pretty shortly where the domes. And that would be, that would be where staff would come in, and it's also where students like to go at once.
Yeah, so we've been using the back balcony for kids to come in and staff, which is right in that building, so it's kind of nice. You're not walking in the front and going all the way to the back. And then kids exit out from the doors behind the kitchen, go out to the buses, cars, walk to the middle school, stuff like that. So we just move the points this way.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about our upcoming baseball and softball seasons. Are we gonna have access from that parking area to the baseball and softball fields for the entire two-year season?
We're doing the transfer relocation.
Well, I mean, it won't, the fence off area is not gonna increase towards there at all, is it?
No. Whenever everybody comes, whenever y'all come back for the spring semester, that whole parking office, the staff parking, will be given back over to the staff. We're not gonna keep that. That is there just for the transfer relocation. And then we will have the whole area around the fields and our practice field, that will be fenced off, but we won't make any more parking. And Principal Blackwood's been very kind to us. We still have this teacher parking. So we're working together towards that fairway court day, so that, you know, the two of us and Mr. Blackwood can make sure that you guys can get access to baseball or softball. Not gonna be the traditional access plan, but there is a plan that we're working towards that's gonna be starting on February.
Any other questions? Okay. Yes, appreciate it. Thank you. Robert, how far away do we, to score lights from sparking them up, do we think?
Take a second. I talked with the co-ahorn again today, and they're in the same situation with the ground out there and setting the poles. You know, there's only a couple days worth of work to do that tie, but they're also waiting for a separate window to set that out there. But I think our goal that we've been working with is actually ahead of our original schedule, was to be able to turn everything over in February. That way, everything's complete, so you guys can start using it in the beginning. So the lights are just, once utilities have, they're about five days or once utilities have been five days, we have to burn. The lights are all still, and everything's connected together. They're starting on the pole bases for the, along the road on Thursday. So start early though. The underground conduits, they're gonna pull the wire between the pole and stand pole. We've got those poles here on site in the heads as well. I'm sure the trailer's gonna work on that lighting in the front as well. You know, I don't know if you guys know, we're upgrading the heads to the existing lighting. I'm working on that while the lighting is out.
Aubrey, how far away we from the wind screens? The correct wind screens being on the tennis courts?
I don't have an update on that delivery date, so I'll have to talk to them.
Okay, thank you. You have questions? Okay, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, next one. Moving to the public participation portion of the meeting. At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.2307 of the Texas Government Code. Did we have anyone wishing to address the board?
No, sir, that's I'm done.
All right. Next one, we've got the superintendent reports.
All right, Mr. Conrims, we're straight to you, Seabass.
Okay, so I'm super excited tonight to bring you.
There we go, checked in?
There we go. So super excited tonight to bring you the latest update on our community accountability system. We've been working diligently on that. So we're actually a little bit ahead of schedule, which is a good thing. So just as a reminder, working backwards in August, the August-September timeframe is when we will have our first full-blown community report. And then in this upcoming April will be our, what do we call it, our appetizer. We're gonna have our first run at it. Maybe learn some things from that, so we're better prepared for August. And then, but right now, we have established all seven pillars. We have all seven pillars with the key questions and the benefits, and we have started working on our signaling. So just as a disclaimer, tonight is not about signaling. Really, what I'm gonna show you or fully report to you is the key questions in the pillars, specifically with pillars two, four, and six. And so that's the last piece that we've developed to present to you. But I did also want to show you a little piece of this here. So this is the district chart here. So we've built this out to where there is a district sheet, and then there is a sheet for every campus. So the district sheet, as you'll see here, that's, so 22, 23, quarter two. And so you can see the signaling there, which is not complete. But this gives you a little bit of a glimpse into what this is going to look like. So for example, you can see, you see each campus listed there. And so, for example, on 1.2, you can see that three of our five campuses have, they're making a major change there. And so therefore, three out of five, that's our indicator, okay, increased district support. How do we need to assist them in accomplishing this? And so then all seven pillars are listed down the side. And then where are we at today? And so then all seven pillars are listed down the side, and then where are we at today? 22, 23, quarter two. Now, Faith, if you wouldn't mind clicking on the middle school tab.
Question before you leave the district page.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that there was only two particular questions that had a red. Is that, what's the significance of only indicating the red versus whatever your summation there?
Right, so red, of course, is major changes, and that's written, so in that one, that is related around, American reading is huge. So if, so, let me show you the middle school page, and maybe that might help kind of put this in a little bit of context as well. So on, okay, so Tom has gone ahead and fully signaled. And so you can see, so for example, on his 3.1, you can see the major change. Now, that is a three-year glimpse. We're looking back 12 months, we're looking forward, we're looking forward 24 months. So he anticipates that the major changes, which he, you know, each campus principal will be able to elaborate, they'll be able to discuss with anybody, what evidence that we have that has indicated we need to make these changes, what actions we're taking, those kinds of things. So you can see that he's anticipating that it's going to take two years now to fully implement that. The, when you look at 3.0, or I'm sorry, 1.3, he's also making some minor changes there. And then for this exercise, he had already signaled on that in the previous quarter, so you can see there that he has that OT. He's on track with the changes that he's making. And he projects that within six months, by the end of the year, those changes will be fully implemented and in place, and that we will have achieved, the effect will be achieved, and then therefore, after that six-month period, then we'll be in a maintained state. So now, additionally, we recognize, there's a lot of, you know, our schools are complex organizations. And so with that, there's always changes that we can make. We have to be really careful. We have a lot of conversation about this, about not making too many changes too fast. About 20% is the number. We're making changes, or especially any significant changes, at more than 20% of things we're doing for faculty. So we can make these changes and indicate and see, and see where those changes are. So anyway, that gives, now, also we recognize that where we're at today, so that blue column there shows 22, 23, quarter two. As we move to the next quarter, that thing could totally change. We could get a piece of evidence, something could happen, and we might be thinking that we're going to maintain, something could happen that we could then come back and say, uh-oh, we've got to get, we've got to make a major change, or a minor change, or whatever the case may be. So, so I've gotten away, did I answer your question?
Not really.
No, okay, I didn't think I did, that's why I wanted to come back and ask, what did you ask me?
So if, on the district?
Yes, sir.
Table?
Yes, sir.
When I looked at this, again, probably bad to just assume, but that the overall for the district, we were making a change that affected a majority of the district. It appears the elementary schools are all being changed. So to me, that indicated that was probably a summary of our work. And I just found it interesting that we only showed the reds and versus some of them were green, or, you know, where no real change was needed. So again, that's why I was asking, well, am I misreading what the charts tell me?
No, I think you're spot on. The American reading is significant change in those elementary campuses. And again, as a disclaimer, I'm showing you that, the signaling is not fully implemented yet. And so, but yes, that's what, that's what you will see. So since they are making those significant changes, that's where then, then you see out to the far right, you can see that we have a red major change for the district. We cause three-fifths of our campus are making. Now, if it's one out of five campuses, I'm not saying that we're not going to support them, we absolutely are, but where are we placing, prioritizing, I think would be, would be the best way to say it.
So the top row, then, question 1.1.
Yes, sir.
You would indicate that as green?
Yes, sir.
If it was completely filled in?
If it was completely filled in?
Yes.
So yes.
Central Office of Everest.
Yes.
Top row, question 1.1.
Yes, sir.
No color there.
Right.
I assumed that it was all green because everything was green, but it...
Well, correct.
I may be misreading the table.
Well, and, and really, I've only shown where we're making, where the district is making significant contribution. Like I said, we haven't completely gotten to that point where we're fully signaling. Maybe I made a mistake even putting that on here, but I did want to, I did want to show you, because this is going to become very public, this will become very forward-facing, it will be on the website. We want, because these things, you know, for example, like Mr. Flood standing up here and telling you all of the great things that have happened at the high school, that even just this semester, those accomplishments, those things a lot of times don't get their due in the state accountability system, you know, where it's test scores or graduation rates. No, there's a lot of great things happening. And so those things will be included here and be part of our conversation around, hey, we're accountable for more than just, than just what that shows. So ultimately, the district, you know, we'll see how that goes. There's 1.1, the district, they're considering some minor things, nothing major there. Really, where the district's even where you don't see anything, there's not any major district support then on those, at those benefits. Okay? Any other questions around that? And then what I really like also is the, on the campus pages, like I mentioned, the ability to look back, to see where we've been, to see where we are, then also what we call that sunset date. How long is it going to take to fully implement? You'll see that with the American reading, for example. That's going to take a couple of years to fully implement that and see, and see how we're doing. Some things won't take as long, but, so to be able to see, to see that, we're excited. We met, in fact, with our, before I go into those, we met with our consultant last week. His name is John Tanner, and we had a proud moment, I will say, where he was very impressed with the work that we've done. And he, he advised us on a couple of minor changes, nothing significant, but he was very impressed with the work that we have done. And so every time I come up here to talk about this, always kudos to our principals for the job that they do in putting this together. So, so with that, we're very proud of the work that we've accomplished, where we've been, where we are, and where we're headed with this. Excited to be continuing coming with that. So finally, on the district page, you should be able to see there, pillar two, student readiness. So I'm presenting to you pillars two, four, and six. So 2.1, TWD, to what degree? To what degree do we prepare students for the next level, including life after graduation? So the benefit there is readiness for the future. And this is where the, you know, as a reminder, the principals will be able to come to you with their evidence, surveys, data. Some, there will be some stories that will be a part of this as well, not just, not just hard numbers and data and things, but there will be stories to tell of, you know, ad kids or athletic kids or things that have happened. 2.2, to what degree do we promote and model lifelong learning? And so the benefit there is just that, lifelong learning habits. 2.3, to what degree do we teach students to focus on their future? We want them to be able to think ahead, think ahead to the next grade level, think ahead to the next young, they're going from middle school to high school, and then also beyond. And then finally, 2.4, to what degree do we support students to always do their best? We wanted to, we talk a lot about accountability and ownership of their, of their learning and their experience here, so we want to promote that accountability. So those are our key questions and benefits for pillar two, student readiness. Any questions around pillar two? Pillar four, which is community engagement and partnerships. 4.1, to what degree does the school engage the community in understanding schools and partnering for the benefit of all? And so the benefit there certainly is our community and all aspects of our community as partners. 4.2, to what degree do schools create meaningful parent partnerships? So we mentioned community, and then parents as partners as well. 4.3, to what degree do we teach students to be productive citizens in their future communities? And so we want our students to be engaged in their, in their communities there. And those are our three key questions and benefits for pillar four. And then finally, pillar six, fiscal and operational systems. To what degree, 6.1, to what degree do our student, do our systems attract effective applicants? And so we want, we want to hire, you know, we're talking in the classroom about our teachers and life-changing teachers. Really, our focus is putting on life-changing people all across the district, so we want our systems to reflect that and hire the best, the very best of the best. 6.2, to what degree do we support stakeholder understanding of system effectiveness? And so stakeholder understanding, you know, and so this is fiscal systems as well, fiscal and operational, so all of our systems and communicating that out and how well we're doing there as well. And then finally, 6.3, to what degree do our resource allocations reflect goals and objectives of the district? We want all of that to be aligned and to be able to say that we're putting, putting resources allocated into the things that we need to pull. So those are two, four, and six. So those are new, and as you can see, all seven pillars are completed with, with the questions that we want to be accountable to, the benefits therein, and then also, as you'll see, you know, the signaling, and if we're on track, if we're not, major changes, minor changes. And so we're prepared now to continue bringing that to you quarterly and to let you know where we're at, at really any given moment in time. So. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Appreciate all the work that you and the principals and administrative team have done on this. You've done quite a bit. Thank you very much. What did Nikki nix to talk to us a little bit about some of our multiple measures and some of the, some of the quick change stuff that TEA is trying to throw at us this year? This just kind of came from a conversation from Seabass and multiple measures, but Nikki, I'm going to let you just kind of run a bit.
Good evening, Dr. Dear, President and Board and Board members. Quick, quick update on industry-based certifications, or as we refer to them as IBCs. TEA uses IBCs as a part of their accountability standards for school districts. They are a part of CCMR accountability, which is college career and military readiness. So they say that IBCs count as an indicator that a student is career-ready. If they can pass a certification that they have vetted through our local industry and business partners, and it's recognized and respected in the industry, then they, they see that as an indicator of success as far as career readiness. Historically, students to earn that career-ready point have only had to pass the certification. The state didn't really care how you got them there, as long as students could pass that vetted certification, then that counted as a career-ready point. Godly historically has been very great at earning, helping students earn those IBCs and to get that career-ready point. It's a lagging indicator on accountability, so for our 22, accountability was actually the 2021 seniors who accounted for our 2022 accountability standards. And we had 67% of our seniors of 2021 earn an IBC, an industry-based certification that was vetted through the state, and that counted towards our CCMR points. Amazing, great. It was one of my interview questions when I, when I came to interview with Godly. How did you get 67% of your students to earn CCMR points? The state also took note of that, and they said, hey, Godly, how did you get 67% of your students to earn IBCs? But it wasn't in the celebratory manner. It wasn't in awe and wonder of, oh my goodness, how did you make that happen? It was, how did you make that happen? We need a compliance review, and we need it submitted by the state with these specifics in it. We need a narrative, we need your data, we need a third-party vendor's data to support your reporting of this data to make sure it's not erroneous. And the words they used are anomalous data that they had found. They went on to say, and this is a quote from TEA, "Godly was identified as having an unusual high rate of 2020, 2021 graduates earning industry-based certifications when compared to similarly sized districts." They go on, "Godly ISD reported 67.3% of 2020, 2021 graduates as earning an IBC, which is considered significantly higher than the state average of 20% for similarly sized districts." They asked for a narrative, data, third-party data. We kept, we collected all of that information, and we wrote our response to TEA. A huge thank you to Ms. Villanueva, Dana Allen, Shawna Allen, Mr. Flood, Angela Angeli, who helped me find all of that data and write our response to TEA to say, yes, we certified 67% of our 2021 graduates, and we did it the right way, and here's a data to support that. Most of our certifications here come through BIM, Business Information Management. That has been a required course for students here in Godly because we value the skills that that teaches students in Microsoft Word and Excel. Our, more than half of the certifications that our 21 graduates earned. Not only is TEA saying, hey, how did you do this? Defend how you did this to us, tell us how you, you know, fudge the error on this, they're also changing the game for us. It's no longer, if you can get students to pass this vetted industry-based certification, now they're requiring that students take three or more classes for four or more credits in a program of study that is aligned to that certification. So say we have a student that moves in from California as a junior, they haven't been with us to take three or four years of courses, we don't have the opportunity to put them through the coursework, to get them to a spot where TEA is going to recognize that they have a welding certification. I can promise you, though, if you give Mr. Pinkerton two years with a student in a welding class, he will get that kid to excellence, to a spot where he can pass a welding certification, and he can leave our building with an AWSD 1.1 welding certification. Is the state going to recognize that for our high school and is our district as a career readiness standard? No, because we didn't have an opportunity to get that student three or more classes for four or more credits. So not only are they saying, oh, Godly, you got 67% of your students to passing an IBC, you need to be down here on this level of 20% passing with the rest of the state, you're way too successful. They're also changing the standards, and I can tell you from conversations I've had with CTE directors around our area, across the metroplex, across the state, everyone is expecting that IBC career-ready points will plummet in the next coming years because of the changes that the state has put in place, to say it's not enough for a student to base an industry-based, vetted, respected certification from the industry. But now they also have to have these three to four courses to align with that certification on their high school transcript. So we're looking at a game that TEA is saying, 60%, which isn't even a 70% passing, they're wanting a 20% passing average to be the average. And now they're making the game more difficult to play to get our accountability standard to the same spot. My personal opinion, I have to wonder if they're really looking at what's best for students. I told Dr. Dear this not too long ago, that one of my favorite things about Godly ISD is that I have yet to be a part of a conversation where student interest and what's best for student hasn't been at the forefront of every single conversation and decision-making point. Are we going to play the TEA game? Yes, I will find a way to help us play the TEA game because we want to stay out of TEA jail because that makes it more difficult for us if we don't play that game. But I can promise you that we will move forward in the spirit of maintaining what is best for students and making decisions that meet TEA standards based off what is best for students. And that's one of the things about Seabass and the accountability approach that the district is taking that I think is priceless. The things that Mr. Carnes visited with you about, all the recognitions tonight, our robotics teams competing against 5A, 6A schools, having a queen of the Johnson County Junior Loftalk Show, having state taffy students, 12 of them. None of that is measured by TEA because they can't, or maybe they choose not to, they won't measure those things. But we measure them here, and we will continue to make decisions that keep us out of TEA jail, but also continue to do what's rightfully to, according to making, making sure they are supported and being in college and career-ready.
Hey, so Dr. Mears, yeah. So thank you for being very vested in student interest. Again, that's what it's all about, so thank you for that. What opportunities do we have to challenge TA?
It's a good question. Anytime there is an opportunity for feedback to the state, I have submitted feedback. I've also given that feedback to Dr. Dear and to all of Cabinet and the principals and asked them to submit feedback. We had a conversation a couple of weeks ago at Cabinet that we need to be more active in reaching out to our local legislators and sharing this message so that they can go to Austin and share the message there as well and be our representatives. You know, sometimes I think TA asks for feedback and they listen, and sometimes I think they ask for feedback to say they've asked for feedback, quite honestly, in my personal opinion.
But the reason I was asking is if there's opportunity for board members to provide feedback to TA, I'm always happy to provide that feedback to them.
I will make sure you're included the next time that opportunity arises.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? I just wanted, Ms. Nix to share this with you because I can see you guys chuckle like we were talking about the letters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize if I'm overly passionate.
Okay, a bilingual. What do you got for us?
I like to come annually and give you a little bit of an update on some of our programs. And so tonight, we are going to hear from Ms. Bailey Lee, who is our emergent bilingual coordinator, which used to be our English learners coordinator, which used to be our English as a second language coordinator. So she's going to talk to us about our program and tell you how we're doing. As Dr. Pottle mentioned, my name is Bailey Lee. I am our ESL coordinator for the district. So I'm here today to talk to you about our programming here in the district and how we're progressing and what the future holds for us. So as Dr. Pottle mentioned, these are kind of the terms that you guys might have heard in previous years. Originally, the term was the English or ELLs, which referred to our English language learners, and then that evolved to just the English learners. And then recently, the Texas Legislature has changed the term from English learners, English learners to emergent bilinguals, and however, the federal government still refers to the term as English learners. So we can hear both of those. But this is our current enrollment for our emergent bilingual students. So some of you guys might wonder, who is an emergent bilingual student? So students are identified as emergent bilingual students upon initial enrollment if they indicate any other language than English on their home language survey. So from that, we take that student and we give them a language proficiency exam. And if that home language survey indicates a different language and they, the primary language proficiency exam shows that they are English learner, we can then provide or offer the parents our English as a second language program. So parents can accept or deny. Once they are accepting our programming here in Godly, right now, we currently only offer our ESL program. So we're going to go over on that in a minute, but for right now, I just wanted you guys to take a peek at our annual enrollment of our emergent bilingual students. As you can see, and as everyone else has mentioned already this evening, those members are growing along with everything else. So these are some other little snippets from the National Center for Education Statistics. As you guys know, our population here and in the United States is growing rapidly. And so our, the, the education has also projected that we need to indicate major changes in our nation's education system to meet the needs of these students. So what are we going to do? So here in Godly, we currently have our, okay, we currently have our ESL programming. So we have ESL content-based, which basically means the students' content-based core content area teachers are certified as they, they hold their ESL certification. So we also have our ESL pull-out, which means basically just their ELAR teacher or their English teacher is ESL certified. And then we also have our alternative language program, which means that maybe their ELAR teacher isn't ESL certified, but they're receiving those ESL strategies and other classes to help them become English proficient and maybe successful in their academic areas. So, and I also have a list on there, the different campuses of which program is at which campus, and there's also a pie chart there that kind of explains what percentages of students we have. So also, if your district, our district, has 20 or more identified English learners in the same language background and in the same grade level district-wide, the Texas Administrative Code requires a bilingual education program at the elementary grade levels. So we have met this threshold on multiple grade levels. However, we are currently filing for a bilingual exception because we don't have the staffing appropriately bilingual certified teacher. So we have also filed for an ESL waiver due to not having, not having met the staff certification requirements. So basically, the students who are being served in an alternative language program because the state minimum is for that English or ELAR teacher to hold their ESL certification. So if they don't, we have to file for an ESL waiver, which basically just, it's us indicating that maybe we need some additional supports in hiring appropriately certified teachers. So, it's okay. So basically, when students have enrolled and parents have given permission to be a part of our ESL program, they have the right to highly, highly qualified and certified teachers or educators. Their instruction is guided by the TEACs and the English Language Proficiency Standards, or the ELPs. We use their TELPOS and STAR data, which TELPOS is the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment System, which our emergent bilingual students are required to take once they have been identified until they meet. English proficiency can be reclassified as English proficient student. So we're going to use both of those data points to help drive the instruction for those students to become English proficient and be able to exit or reclassify out of the ESL or emergent bilingual status. Also, we, one of my goals this year is to promote parent involvement, reaching out to those parents and really giving them resources and ways that they can help at home and how they can be more involved in their child's education. And then a summer school program for students entering the kindergarten and first grade levels, just to give them more exposure to the English language, so they don't have so much of that summer, summer slant. So currently, our current certifications per campus, like I had mentioned before, if a student is ESL, I mean, emergent bilingual, the state minimum is for their ELAR teacher to hold an ESL certification. So they have to have their general, general education, and then they're able to get their ESL certification. So these are, this is kind of a peek at what we have in the district. Like I had mentioned before, we currently do not have any educators that are appropriately certified for a bilingual program. Here is a peek at our 21 STAR results. So that darker purple color is our emergent bilingual students, and then the lighter purple is your general, all of our students average here in Godly. As you can see, there is a difference between the students who English is not their primary language in the home and our average Godly ISD student. So we want to know, what are we going to do about this? So this year, we are, we have implemented use of Summit K-12 primarily at our primary campuses. We're hoping that we can push these students to reach their reclassification at an earlier age. All of the conferences and everything that I go to just to learn more about the programming is once they hit that secondary level, their drive and their passion isn't necessarily there to take a test. So if we can really push them at a younger age to reclassify, it would be in the best interest for everyone. So and then we're going to ensure that the teachers are embedding their ELPs in their everyday lessons, and they're doing it already. It's just a matter of them really, because it's the how, you know? Here's the TEAC, but how are we going to do it? We're going to get them to speak. We're going to get them, you know, to write, to read, basically just ensuring that they're hitting those TEACs to make sure that those students reach that proficiency level that we want them at. So if you're not familiar with the TELPOS system, it kind of writes it up there. It's a test that tests their listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and they can get four different scores from that, beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. So it's a whole system of the testing, and once they're in kindergarten and first grade, the teachers rate those students holistically. But once they hit second grade, that test is online. So this year is going to be a swing of things because they've also embedded the writing portion online. So second graders will be taking writing and editing on a computer. So there's also been some complaints statewide of the reclassification being too difficult. A lot of, a lot of school districts have reached a point where these students are mastering their STAR tests, but they're not showing that they're English proficient because there might be just like Mr. and Mrs. Nix was saying, you know, TA loves to make things fun. So there is currently a suit about this. So nothing will be changing right now, but hopefully I did receive an invitation to be a part of that conversation about the reclassification potentially changing. So it might be a lot up into the tunnel. So this next slide is just a little snapshot of our summer school from last year. We had 27 students enroll. We had two teachers with a 93% attendance rate. We were able to host a visitor field trip of wildlife on the move, and he brought animals to life here in the district, and he brought reptiles, amphibians, and mammals, and we were able to extend our studies outside of, you know, the traditional classroom. And we also took advantage of the agriculture center and the horticulture greenhouse here to take a little field trip over there for the kids to get, to see those things. So I'm sure we're going to have some fun adventures this summer as well. And then the last slide is just a little goal for our program this year. So we're going to really focus on that TELPOS and STAR results and the data to drive instruction, and we're implementing K-12, Summit K-12 to connect to literacy. Hopefully sending more staff to professional development and helping those teachers really understand what we're, what we're striving for and what their role is in this programming, encourage parent involvement. And then I've also reached out to families or sent letters and emails out to families to gather information on data of being, of implementing a bilingual program here in Godly, because I know that that is something that we, obviously, we need to do according to TA. However, the responses that I've gotten have not necessarily been plentiful. So, you know, all of our students, I think, had one response. So, and then as far as increased enrollment in our upcoming summer school this next summer and ensure that the staff understands the processes and certifications required for ESL programming. Do you have any questions? It's a lot of information, I know.
You know, I'm not going to let you off without a question.
That's okay. I'm welcome.
If you go back to, you don't have to go back to the slide, but the slide that referenced our different campuses and many teachers that we have, so, but even with that, I believe I understood you to say that that still doesn't meet what the, what TA is desiring.
Correct.
So your queen for the day, what do you do to solve that?
So I think that we really need to ensure that when we're hiring staff, that they are either certified before they get hired or ensure that we have a staff member on that, on that campus that is able to pull those students out and provide those services on the campus if that teacher is not appropriately certified.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. She's done a fantastic job. She's come in and taken on a huge task, and the numbers are growing every day. So kudos to Ms. Lee. She is amazing. Okay, Godly Reads update. There's been a lot going on this semester, so we have not given up on Godly Reads. But American reading is a huge part of what we're trying to accomplish. Our goal for Godly Reads is that this year's pre-K kids are reading on or above grade level before they leave second grade. I had a picture. Is my picture there? Okay, well, I had a picture I wanted to show you. It was one of our pre-K students who has a brand-new baby sister at home, and it's one of our facilitators grandbabies. But he is four years old. He's been in school for just this year. And mom went to go get dressed, and she came back, and he had the book upright, right direction, and was reading to his three-year-old baby sister. That is at the heart of what we're trying to accomplish. We have our babies, our youngest kids in this school. They know how to pick up a book, hold it the right way, turn the pages, and they know that reading is important, and that much crasser. That is what we're trying to accomplish with this group of babies that are coming through, and we are seeing it with our pre-K, with our kinder. If we can instill a love of reading at home and at school and in the community, everybody knows how important reading is, we will accomplish our goal. Also, our Family and Community Engagement Committee is just getting rolling. We had our first meeting last week. I had seven, eight teachers that have volunteered to serve, excitedly volunteered, not just, yes, I'll do it, but like, hey, I'd love to do that. So we're getting a committee of people together. I cannot do it alone. I cannot get into the community and do all this things alone. So our Family and Community Engagement Committee are going to take that side of it and accomplish goal, pillar four on CBAS, because that's that bridging that gap between us and the community. So it's, it's all going to come together. I always talk about this golden thread that kind of pulls everything together. But American reading has been our big, big push for our Godly Reads for this semester so far. But we will have an event in the spring where we bring families in, and just know that everywhere we go, we are seeing the fruits of our labors out in the community. So it's happening slowly, but it's happening. Okay, I think I have another three or four slides, so. I should have had sip. Sips?
That's, that's next, next slide.
Right here. Okay.
Any questions for Godly Reads? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next, we'll move into the business portion of the meeting. And first, we'll consider the consent agenda items. As I know, if there are no objections, we will table the regular meeting minutes of November 14th, 2022 to the December 20th meeting. If there are no objections, we will table that. So now we will consider the consent agenda items, which would be the District Financial Report, District Tax Report, and District One Feet Investment Cash Report. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will consider approving the Godly ISD campus improvement plans for the 2022, 2023 school year.
No changes to the campus improvement plans from the last time you've seen them. We will do a mid-year update just to kind of look at where we are on what we've done so far, but there won't be any changes to the goals or the action plans that we have in place. So this will be your third viewing of the plans for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the campus improvement plans as presented. A motion by Craig and a second by Krista. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Quickly, the closed session. We'll move into the debate conference since we can.
We will move into closed session at 7:23 PM.
Real quick. Real quick.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know if this week was, maybe it was horrible.
All right, Krista. All right, yeah, good to see you, man. Take care.
The tape was having to destroy the, this tape.
I started going to him, just because there are people. They don't want to go there for licenses. I don't want to listen. No transportation, I mean, nothing. Maybe once or hours long. So, so that's, that's a surprise. Yeah, it's something to do. Anyway, I assume y'all have, and the company to call up to the parents. But it'd be, it'd get, we could, that's the thing, they're, but that's, I'm liking it. Place to do. But that's forgotten. That's what I was gonna, I was gonna say. Who, who it was. I see this, I see this. So, I'll take a class. The right ones are only, they don't have a constant. Because you have to know, because that people now don't. So anyway, that's just, they don't get, those guys come. Well, people, that's the, we need to think that. Like I was telling, we never work on this. Danny goes lower already, good, it's before, it's a conference. Kids, each people, pretty great sport, they're, that's a media. I feel like, no, I have a reputation. But it has students' names and parents' names and full contact information. Suzanne, yeah, they're not doing it. So it's our, I'm gonna cherry.
I will, I'll get, I'll, I'll download that tomorrow. I'll download the sheeting Excel, and then I'll just send, I'll, I'll send it to time to be able to do. Just kind of figure it out. Hopefully we can get those numbers in Excel and copy and paste where we can balance it. Should, I, I just, we found some ideas off each other and said, yeah. I might, I might, I might.
We got, we got two months, right?
We got two months, and I think Kelly and Craig, we have, should be able to help us. And I, I just think we could just label each, each category. We'll be, I'm really, we're gonna, total of, that's all, I think. I think what we've done in the first year. I don't know, brother, if I do wrong, we could be, could be begging more. I know, I actually had it on my.
I know, it's scary, we need to leave your place for swirl in a little wheel about.
Yes, now that I can do.
Once upon a. Down, go. Employ that, do it, see it. Same. Where do you think, where do you think safe is the same?
Yeah.
And then like, and we need to like, it's like, if we, you know, a notch box, right? The notch box, what we send to, to what's part, to pay, to pay each person. So in theory, we can take that notch box, change the date, and just send it to pay. Everybody just get the same pay. Or what we could do is run a dummy pay, or separate to base pay. No overtime, no, no, out cuts, so that they don't work overtime. No overtime, no whatever. And so at this point, we should basically download that to something so that we then have a notch, that we have something to create a notch box. The worst case scenario, you know, is you're getting your base pay. By week, by month, twice, twice a month, the guys will get it. Sorry, if you had overtime coming to you, we figured out later. So, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, with like, I was telling Justin, we can handwrite checks, you pay, but, but you know, it has to be four papers. He had signed their check, or if they give me, I'm a bank signer. And Rich is a bank signer. So he and I can sign the checks, it doesn't have to be four papers. It's always has one. So we can handwrite checks. That would take forever, they would obviously, it's pretty, we wouldn't want to do it, but, yeah. I mean, vendor's only gonna let's go so long, unless, of course, vendor could give me a credit card. Two, they might. Pay several hundred thousand dollars, or something like that. Uh, twenty thousand, so, no, even credit cards. And some of our vendors, we can like click a button, just take it out of the menu. To me, I just take it outside the box. That's what Mansur was, they were, ah. The most biggest was, if they were getting a, they said they prepared quite a few open records of access. What are you doing to fix this? Or, or is my standard ratio to say, what are you gonna keep my information, sorry? I'd say that, because like, they were, they were, they were including their communications. So literally, I think, I don't know. Oh, like, you just got, every email is six, six, and it turns on. So it was like that. All right, yeah, but, yeah, this, this, our, 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 our. Like, if you, you know, you have a call, like, if you, if you can add, like, if you have to, give every, we, we're, we're. But also, you're gonna do it, going, everyone in control, having, everybody, because of the. Yeah, yeah, but they come forward and do it, and I signed up for it. Reunite me from my life.
Five hundred, five hundred employees.
But, so, if the employees won't, most of them won't sign up. And then some of them.
The time is seven thirty-nine PM, and the board will move back into voting session. A motion and a second to adjourn. If there are no objections, the board will stand adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM.